You're watching Cable 2.
Hands, and we will go from there. First, can we get a roll call to establish a quorum? I know Dana is not here, but that would be me and Barbara Burke.
And I think Chair Woodbury is on the call as well.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is Barbara Burke on?
I have Chair Woodbury and Ms. Mott Singer are here. Ms. Mott Singer and Chair Woodbury and Mrs. Parker.
Okay.
We don't have Ms. Burke right now.
And I'm here also, although I'm not a committee. It's Deanna.
Okay.
Right.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kaplan.
So Deion, right in the house.
Same with me also. Board Member Crowley is here.
Thank you. Deion, we have from the committee, it is me, Barbara and Dana. I know Shay can step in. Does that establish a quorum or does that not establish a quorum?
Yes, ma'am. I was actually going to say that either Ms. Woodbury can step in as a member to establish a quorum today, or she can appoint one of the other board members who's on the call today for the limited purpose of being on the committee today.
And I think my understanding is Barbara is coming. I think she was running late, sort of sent a text.
Okay. Well, then while we wait for Barbara, I'd like to take a chance to acknowledge our community partners that have joined the meeting. And that would be Val Young from the FCAE, Michelle Crown, who's a parent, Eunice Campbell from the NAACP, Leila Garmes from the Winston-Salem Foundation, Robert Leek from the Con Oak Guinea-Saint Community, Carolyn Highsmith from the Coalition for Equity and Public Education, Lee Roy Davis from Black Philanthropy, Emily Shutt from Spies and Action for Equity, Pam Peoples Joiners from the Winston-Salem Police Department, Katie Solomon Lee from Action for Equity, Michelle Higgins from Kernersville. And excuse me if I mispronounce a name because my glasses are not quite as good as they need to be anymore, Timbilia Covington from the Ministers Alliance, Megan Gregory from NCCLO, Pastor Daniel Sestacia from NCCLO, and Vivian Perez Chandler from the College and Career Director of the Fulton Family YMCA. And then we'll wait a few minutes and see if Barbara can pop on. And welcome, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. This is Shay Woodbury. Board Member Bramer, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Okay, good. If I can get someone to stand in for Board Member Burke, one of the board members that will be able to be on the call the entire time, because I may unfortunately have to leave before the meeting is over.
This is Board Member Kaplan. I'm happy to.
That'd be great, thank you.
You're welcome.
We have two agenda items. One is a survey update from Forsyth Future with Adam Hill. Can we hand it over to Adam Hill, please?
Sure. And actually, I'm going to have Elizabeth Mees present for us tonight.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, can you share your screen?
Thank you, Adam. Let me... Here we go. Excellent. So I am just here to give an update on where we are with the school assignment survey. We launched the survey on October 23rd, and we have more than 5,000 complete responses so far. We've been really, really pleased with the responses we've been getting. And our next steps are we are beginning our outreach process to parents of children with, or parents of children ages zero to four. And we're working on outreach specifically to groups with low response rates to ensure that we get a representative sample. And we're doing that through collaboration with some of our community partners, as well as survey collection at meal distribution sites. Does anybody have any questions?
How is our turnout so far with like high school and middle school parents?
I would have to look those numbers up very specifically. One second, let me see if I can pull them. What we're planning on doing on the back end is we are planning on weighting the surveys because we have a large enough sample size that we should have a pretty good sample from all populations. And that hasn't flagged in any of our reviews of the results so far as an area that we're particularly concerned about. And I can look that up in the data and get back to you.
That'd be great, thank you. I know that when I first started this process, we started with kindergarten completely blind, not understanding everything that was implied. But by the time you hit middle school, you're really into it and you know how it works. But thank you very much. We're going to have a quick update from the Cooperative Strategies from David Sturts.
Yes, thank you. And like Adam, I'm going to pass over a majority of the presentation to Karen Daniel Hamburg from our team and Chris Schmidt. Just to give you a quick process update, we did educational visioning sessions with your leadership from the academic team back in May-June, just to help paint a picture of desired outcomes for each of the choice programs as they currently stand. We then worked, Karen's going to show how we have taken those programs in their current spaces, looked at the operational implications from, you know, from the building standpoint, what kind of learning environments are typically and should be available to support the types of programs that you have, what's the delta between what you have and what you have in the facility side and what a standard would be for them. And then, third, we are in the process right now of doing an operational analysis on a cost per pupil distinction between traditional programs and the different choice programs in sample districts from around the country to help have a good idea of not only what might facilities need in terms of investment to really best support choice programs where they ultimately land, but also what would be the probable expected increase in cost per pupil to really run those programs at a high level. So Karen, I'm going to turn off camera and mic and give you the floor.
Great, thank you. And can everybody see my screen? This always makes me nervous.
Yes, indeed, we can.
Great, okay. So as David mentioned, we did a couple visioning sessions or focus groups with staff members. They were really held to gather some information on the different magnet programs, as well as the vision of the program and how it currently exists versus how we want it to exist in the future. So with that, we did gather a lot of data, and this is just, I know it's a lot, but this is the high-level version. For visual and performing arts, a central location for all programs with elementary to high school theaters. And they also wanted to offer a unique program to attract students and not just add an additional class or two and call it a visual and performing arts school. Dual languages, same idea. Pretty much everybody said that they, that a K-12 theater program was very desirable for them. But for dual languages, they want to use dual language instruction programs as a tool to close the achievement gap. They want to strive to provide equitable access to dual language instruction programs, and they want to teach materials in the target language. Early college and middle college, again, these are held at Forsyth Technical Institute, I believe. And for this program, the desire was to form a unique high school dedicated to preparing students for careers that are available in the community and in the future and prepare 21st century learners. IB and international studies, they wanted a rigorous learning experience to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring students that help create better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. And for the international studies portion of the program, they wanted to provide an academically challenging intertwined environment that offers students a world of learning opportunities to experience the rich diversity of cultures from around the world. STEM, with STEM, they really wanted to focus on learning through STEM materials, not just about STEM. And they really wanted to make sure every student was engaged in the STEM activities within the school. The last two were experiential schools and multiple intelligences. With these, what we heard was that it's a great philosophy to use across all schools rather than a separate magnet program only for some. So with these two, we were less focused on the experiential schools and multiple intelligences just for that purpose. We heard multiple times that these are more, these should be done across all buildings rather than have a specific magnet for them. The other overarching feedback that we heard from everybody about almost every program is that they want equitable access, and they want schools that are entirely dedicated to that program rather than a school within a school. So the next thing we did was kind of look through your current buildings and identify the spaces that existed within those buildings, as well as the spaces that are necessary to have a robust program within that building. So I'm going to show you an example. This is Reynolds High School. With this one, so you can see it's color-coded based on that key in the top right corner. So you can see all of the art spaces, everything that's there. We did identify a couple of spaces that were not, that did not exist currently in the building, as well as some solutions, some capital solutions to get to where we need to be with these. It's really all about educational adequacy at this point. So we added all this up, and what it came to, wrong one. We were able to do this for every magnet school in the district, or all the dedicated magnet schools at least, and find the capital implications of this. And so overall, what it would take to get the current facilities up to par with, to create robust programs at each of these facilities, it would be around $34 million. Keep in mind that this is estimated cost, so rough order.
And if I may, Karen, thank you. Just a quick brief here on how these costs are calculated. Again, what we did is we have, one of our service lines that we work with school districts around the country is to create what we call educational standards or educational specifications, which are what are the types of learning spaces, at what sizes are needed, and what quantities at schools of different types in order to support the learning model. And so what we did is we took the standards, if you will, for visual performing arts at elementary, middle, high, dual language, and IB, the same, and STEM, the same. Applied those standards to the inventory of spaces at all of the schools, took the CAD files and looked through, and then coded where you had potential gaps that you could repurpose existing spaces in order to meet those standards, in order to have that full panoply of different learning environments that are, we typically see as standard for these. And then used, working with your team and noting what current construction costs are, did a rough order of magnitude cost estimate for what it would take to renovate the space in order to accommodate that gap that we saw.
Thank you. Before you continue, we do have a question from a board member. Elizabeth Mott Singer has her hand up.
Sure. Yes, hi. My question about the Philo Hill Middle School, because I'm seeing it under dual language and IB, but is the plan as it's rebuilt to become a visual and performing arts?
That's what's going to be my exact same question as well, as we have looked at Philo Hill to move to a visual and performing arts.
And then with the cost, with the cost, the extra cost as far as it being a really well-equipped magnet school, is that part of the cost when we rebuild it? Thanks.
So we, yes, so Colin has not been involved in this conversation, and we had had some meetings about this. So yes, it will be, and we'll make that adjustment with David.
Thank you so much.
Sorry to throw that in at kind of like a last-minute thing, but I thought you might want to know that. Thank you very much. Can you continue, please?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's excellent information. Thank you. All right. And I'm going to ask for Chris.
Yeah, Karen, and as a process there, update, the next step after Chris's presentation and his work is done on the operational side and benchmarking is to create options where we have not yet, you know, had the discussions of where every program ought to, in an ideal circumstance, land. And so that's part of the next phase there.
Thank you.
All right, hi, everybody. I'm Chris Schmidt. Sounds like it's my turn here. And I'm going to give you an update on the work we're doing to look at school site expenses. And I'm going to briefly talk about our process and our methodology and the progress we've made and the outcomes we're planning to deliver.
Chris, before you start, Chris, before you start, can we, I hate to interrupt, Ms. Bramer, we have someone in the chat who also had a question. Did you want to wait or let him go on?
Yes, I was just writing to her. We have Katie Solomon Lee, she's trying to raise her hand, but it's not working. Could she go ahead and ask a question?
Yes, hi, thank you. I had a question about why we're spending money to renovate these schools right now, and where did that money come from, and why was it raised? Was it from the bond? I just didn't see any reasoning for spending all $36 million right now.
Which schools would you reference?
In the previous slide, there had updates happening at all the schools, and I just hadn't heard anything about that. And I was wondering, yes, yes, that.
Oh, these are all, these are all, if the plan, this is part of the planning process. And some of the information is, this is more of a planning process in one camp and the new construction, just with Mr. Moore. So it looks like we need to connect these two. And so these are all projections. These are not, these are recommendations.
Okay.
There's no, just not really any dollars that anyone has allocated for these schools.
Okay, so this is just a recommendation if we wanted to do magnet really well, basically?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We will apply this, we will apply this same analysis when we, after we develop options to look at where school, like if programs would move, we would do the same analysis so we'd get an idea about the capital implications of that move.
Michelle Cron has a question and a side note. I think Elizabeth Mott Singer was trying to say, this is our wish list, not our guarantee. Michelle, could you please speak a little louder? We're actually not able to hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, I was just curious because I'm looking at the list, and I remember in, I think the last meeting, Mrs. Grant had talked with two of the restart schools that IB might be an option at the two restart elementary schools. And I was just curious with Ashley going into replacement, why we have Ashley Elementary under the IB dual language? And also with Wiley Middle, I'm just curious with visual and performing arts, I know there's STEAM, but I was just curious with that one as well, especially when we're going Philo Hill Arts Magnet. And that was it.
For a couple of these facilities, we're still waiting on getting updated data for it. So some of these are placeholders. This is more just like a rough order of magnitude, here's where we are, and here's where we're going. And we have been having talks with Colin and Uman about the facility changes and things like that. So we will most definitely get that updated ASAP.
And I'll say, Ashley, while we have the property, we really don't have the capital for the school itself in that area. But we still want to accommodate those students with the new facility or an absence of a new facility, more than likely.
And again, this is a wish list. This is a where we would like to see where we're going. We're looking at what we need, and this could be like spaced out over time. We're not saying this is going to be on the next agenda item, we're all going to vote on it. This is a slow process that we will get through. And I'll hand it back over. Thank you very much.
Hey, y'all, can you hear me all right? Should I, should I go ahead? Or are there more questions?
Yes, yes, Chris, please go ahead.
Okay, no problem. So I just briefly, I'm going to talk about our process, our progress, and anticipated outcomes for delivering kind of our findings. Our process, so we have three points here, but basically you can break that down in where you need to get the data, we're going to normalize the data, that's point two, and point three, we're going to compare the data. So for gathering the data, we are blessed, lucky, however you want to put it, that the Every Student Succeeds Act, which was the 2015 reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 1965, it requires that LEAs or local educational agencies annually report data to their state education agency, all kinds of data for report cards. And a lot of that data is per pupil, data for school site level, which is, that's pretty granular data to get reports on. So some states are doing better at others than that, and we have identified numerous states where the data is reasonably accessible for us to go get and pull down. And we can then have per pupil school site data on expenditures that we can compare typical, typical schools to one of their magnet schools. And so that's a really great resource for the data we need to do this work. And then secondly, we'll then kind of normalize the data. So we don't want to just pull any old, you know, magnet program. And, you know, some districts have magnet in name only, and they're not very robust. And so we're really scrubbing the data to make sure that, one, we're clearly looking at the type of programs that, you know, comparable types of programs, so STEM, visual and performing arts, international baccalaureate, dual language. But then we also want to find examples of those at each of the grade spans. So each of those for elementary, middle, and high school. We also want to focus on programs that are school-wide programs. And so many of you are familiar with where a magnet program will sort of be just folded into the curriculum, or they may have sort of a few classrooms set aside. But we're actually looking for schools where the entire program at the school site is dedicated to that program. Then, once we get, we'll keep going and make sure we're looking at schools with similar enrollments. We don't want to compare a school with 2,000 kids to a school with 350 kids. So we'll normalize across that. And then also, within the expenditures, I don't want to dive too deep into this, but the way states report that can be complicated. So we want to just look at school site expenditures that are, that are, there's school site and not district level. So people report, people report their expenditures differently. And so often, there's, there's an expense that is just, you know, every district, it's folded in for district-level expenditures. And we want to just focus on school site expenditures, which are salary benefits. It would include, you know, professional training, it could include curriculum materials. So we want to filter that down to just school site expenditures. And then finally, having all that, that will allow us to then actually make the comparison. So we can see, here's a selection of, you know, let's say IB high schools within a certain district, and we have six of those, and one of those is their, is their magnet program, and five of those are typical. And so then we can have a really clean comparison to see the percentage difference. And then, next slide, progress. We continue to pull down data and analyze it from some key states that we've identified that, like I said, reasonably easy. I use the word easy, reasonably easy to get this data, to pull this data down, some easier than others. But we're looking at Texas, Ohio, Michigan, Massachusetts, Louisiana. That gives us, from different-sized states, different-sized districts, a good selection of diversity there. And then ultimately, while it's a lot of kind of front-end work, we hope to create a simple comparison summary chart or matrix that shows the types of programs based on their grade, their grade span, and with some of the anticipated percentage-wise cost differences for, anticipated operational cost differences. So, yeah, that's the update. And if there's any questions?
All right. And I'm just going to go through our next steps to get a, oh, go ahead.
Do you have a question? Excuse me, your quick, that's from Deanna Kaplan.
Yes, thank you, Board Member Bramer. So Chris, have you, when you're looking at these other states, have you, have you examined partnering up with higher eds to help to enrich some of these magnet programs and possibly share some of the expenses? And I'm thinking locally of the School of the Arts and our visual and performing arts magnet programs, that it would, I think it would be an excellent idea.
Well, I would yield to Ms. Bramer or Dr. Hairston on that, that wouldn't be part of my scope currently.
Okay. Thank you.
And I don't think we're quite ready. We're not there yet, but, you know, that can be something in the future we discuss. We want to continue with the next slide?
Okay. So in terms of next steps, what we're looking at, so we're going to get data on wait lists and who all is applying to be a part of these programs, so we can determine where the programs are most desired. So we're asking questions like, are the current locations appropriate for those who are interested? And are we actually allowing access to all with the locations of these programs? We're also going to look and see if there are any facilities that would be a better fit for these programs in terms of that educational adequacy, as well as the location. The last thing we want to do is have a school on the far southwest side of the district when all the kids who want to go there are on the far northeast side. That doesn't make any sense. Once we get all of this information kind of compiled, we're going to start working on options. The options are going to be informed by the academic vision for the program that came out of those visioning sessions we had with staff back in June. And the data we're going to use for this is that floor plan analysis, we saw a little piece of, the capital implications, the operational implications, and then that location analysis. In terms of options, we will, we will be sharing those draft options with you in either probably January or February. And those will be for you to review, and then we'll be coming up with benefits and challenges for those. So that's, that's really what we're looking at for the next couple of months here.
Elizabeth Mott Singer had her hand raised. Do you have a question, Elizabeth?
Hi, just one other question when we've looked at magnets. People keep bringing up wanting a Montessori elementary school. Have we looked into that at all, or? Just a question.
At this point, we have not. We've only really analyzed the current programs, although I have a couple of districts that I'm currently working with that have really robust Montessori programs. So it's definitely something we were able to explore.
So I do know that often, whenever we talk about magnets, people will say to me, well, could we have a Montessori elementary school? And I know several districts offer Montessori schools.
Would you like, Ms. Mott Singer, to sort of explore that and see if there's an answer there?
I think that's worth trying to find out and whether that's a I think that's worth trying to find out, and whether that's a small group of people who are interested, or is it something people really are interested in? So.
Okay.
And the one other magnet program, um, is the Freedom Schools, which have been so successful in the summer pre-COVID. And my question is, I know that there is a charter Freedom School in Charleston, South Carolina, and is something along the Freedom School curriculum done through the Children's Defense Fund something that might also be of interest in our community? So, thank you.
Deanna Kaplan also had her hand raised.
No, no, I don't. I don't. I think it's, um, Board Member Crowley.
Okay, um, Morgan Crowley?
Yes, I just want a second, um, for Member Mottinger's suggestion for the Montessori. I've also heard a lot of feedback from the community about, um, having that as an option. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation and your time. I am, our next meeting will be in January 13th. Our survey will close on December 16th. And I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Hairston for recommending these groups and, and helping put this together. It, it's wonderful to see the work continue forward. Does anyone else have any questions before we adjourn? Okay, then, um, I guess we adjourn the meeting. Is that okay, Deion?
Yes, ma'am, that's fine.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Good night. Thank you all.